So I'll call the County of Brown, filing in zoning commission, arguing needing for order. First item was a roll call. Elsa, okay. So southern. Seven. Since we were here on seven. So. Next, our public hearings. Next item is approval of minutes, previous meetings. Senator motion for.
I would make a motion to approve the meeting of. July eleventh.
A second. No, you seconds. Does anyone have any corrections?
I did not. Something good.
We have no corrections and. We will run the approval. Minutes of July eleven. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Repose, extensions. Washington is caring.
Oh, you know what? No, no, it's not a big deal. Seamus is S E A M U S. I believe.
Sometimes we've got a shameless.
Oh, never mind. I'll, I'll take it back.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
I saw his name and it didn't look right. Could be maybe he's a Scott. I don't know.
She a lot of those names, but very sorry, written down differently when they. Creation. Public communications, there's anyone on the communication. Staff. Is anyone in the public that should address this tonight on? And we move on to. Those about the government subdivisions. Subdivision components number one, number two, subdivision zero, where the road best is.
Just to explain, this is another second final request for an extension on this recording of plans. They did change engineers, so they needed some time to. Take care of everything.
I'm ready to motion to approve a request.
Give me that motion.
No, I have an. I just want to. Brewery Festival ninety day extension. We're recording the final subdivision. Subdivision twenty-three dash one zero, where the road to December fifteenth. Does anyone have any? Questions, concerns or a motion?
How these are the second pilot? We only get two.
Correct, for subdivisions only get two ninety days.
None of them.
Yeah, it's pretty rare. And with some. One on those also to. For the extension of. Extension of recording for us subdivision. Twenty-three, all on all those things. The falls. In search of losing this character. Some of the ones subdivision twenty-two or two. Catch more subdivisions, no high street. Request for. Extension for recording things.
Nothing here. It's a two lot subdivision that was granted. This is their second and final. Extension. They really didn't give much of a reason other than they need more time to prepare.
So I'm making a motion to approve our request for ninety day extension for the. Of the final subdivision for this. Subdivision twenty-three dash two, Pearl High Street. Is there a second?
Second.
No, it's a second. Especially for. Providing the motion. Very normal. We're trying to motion to approve the extension for subdivision. When the fans, by those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's. Who have. Any of those side plans? We have side plan, S I T twenty-three, Bowery Ledgers. Eight seventy-five, last of July. For the effort of. Very presentation.
Absolutely. So. Right, so you should log into the agenda. A whole promotion and then you can share your story.
My name is Rich Algen. I am a partner at Marion Realty Partners. We specialize in multifamily apartments, acquisitions, investments. We also have a management company. We self-manage everything that we do. We own ledges currently. We've owned the property for about four and a half years. And tonight we're presenting a modification to what was already approved. Which was a two hundred and one unit, phase two of the ledges. Reason for the modification is once we started getting into the weeds in terms of the total of the costs, you recall the first plan. Had a podium style construction which allowed for parking underneath the building itself. Construction costs just went through the roof over the last three years and once we looked at the total cost, we decided that that was not going to work. As an investment or for lenders and we pivoted and. Between our engineers and our architecture firm, we were able to modify the plan and as we present tonight. In nearly every instance, we think it's a better plan, setbacks, impervious. Many space, nothing's compromised with this project. And we think it's without the podium, it's going to be a little less expensive for us and we could move forward pretty quickly with construction. So the modification will call for a hundred and ninety-five apartment units down to one. And as soon as Susan logs in, we can go through.
All right. Is this on?
It is on.
Okay, just making sure. All right, um. Now that we've got to our technical difficulties, Susan Marquardt, professional engineer with La Vero Engineering. Before you tonight, we have. Marion Realty Project at three seventy-five Drostic Drive. This was a site plan that was approved in twenty twenty-two. And like Richard mentioned, we've come before you now with a little bit of a redesign. You can, I mean, this is just introducing the team. Richard already introduced himself. I'm Susan, the civil engineer, and we have Talia, the architect with us. And then our attorney is William Sweeney, and he is not able to be here. This is just a quick of what we're going to talk about, just kind of the project summary. We have the architecturals that we'll go through and then opportunity if you have any questions. So this just shows you where the property is located. So you have the ledges one that is next to it and this connects to. So we're on Drostic Drive between the ledges and Solstice Senior Living. This gives you an overview of the footprint of the previously approved building in red and the new building in blue. So you can see it sits in a very similar footprint, just smaller. This just kind of goes through the differences of the approved. On the updated and it just kind of shows the difference. So the previously approved. Plans was two hundred and one units. It was forty-eight studio units, eighty-six one bedroom and sixty-seven two bedroom units. The current design is one hundred and ninety-five total units. So that's a difference of six. The gross floor area, I don't know, I won't read all the specific numbers. Do you listen? You'd like me to, but for the gross floor area. As you can see over on the far right. It is fifty thousand square feet less than what was previously approved. The building height, per the regulations, you have to look at the average grade around the building. To calculate that and then the building height also affects your setbacks. So there was no change in the top of the building or the height. For the setbacks, like I mentioned, your setbacks have a lot to do with the building height, your average grade around the building. The current design is setback thirty-seven feet more from Drostic Drive and it's setback. Eight feet more from the. That would be from the western neighbor. For parking, two hundred and sixty-five spaces were provided and approved previously. Currently, we have two hundred and fifty-six parking spaces and that includes fourteen tandem. But even if you don't count the tandem in the parking calculations, we still provide more than the minimum required. For impervious area with the current layout. We have a little over six thousand square feet less in pervious area. Um, next slide please. So this goes through the setback calculation. So as I mentioned, we're setback farther from Drostic Drive and we're set. A little more interior to the site from the neighbor to the west. This is, you can really see the difference in the comparison of footprint on this plan. The previously approved plan had parking underneath the building for a portion of it. The current design does not have garage parking at all. It's all surface parking. Next slide please. This gives you an idea of the difference in the impervious area. The limit of disturbance line, especially on the eastern side, is reduced. Where we, but the wetlands. This shows that the impervious area has been reduced. So we have more green space and Drostic Drive. And then we have more on the. The part where it goes up the hill and where it connects to the ledges one. All right, if you have any other site questions now, or if not, I'm going to hand it over to Talia who'll go through the architecturals and then we can. Do questions again, however you want to do it.
For the record, my name is Talia Canistra. I'm the architect with the project for Port One Companies. So I'll just bring you through the modified floor plans. This is actually the previously approved lowest floor plan. We wanted to show you this to give you just a datum where Drostic Drive is, the main entry drive. And then vehicular circulation around the property is actually very similar to what we're proposing in the new. Iteration. The main entry is on the corner here with visibility from Drostic Drive. And then the yellow highlighted area is the previous amenity space to the building. It contained the main leasing lobby, the co-working space, a social lounge. And a gym space. And if you go to, if you look here at the bottom left, there's a loading area that was closer up to the top of the hill. So all of these items have been just reconfigured slightly in the new iteration, which we can see on the next slide. So as you can see here, we still have our main entry right on that front corner. We still have all of our amenity space located at this lowest level. Right off of Drostic Drive and the main entry drive is in the same position as it was before with vehicular circulation around the front of the building and up the side. As Susan had mentioned, we no longer have. Garage parking underneath the building. Everything is around the perimeter of the footprint of the building. And the loading zone has actually moved to a more centralized location here, right there in the center of the page. And we've created an outdoor plaza space that can be used as an amenity to the tenants. And also as a buffer to really soften that loading area aesthetically from the street. If we go to the next slide. This brings you up the hill to the first residential level where we have a centralized amenity courtyard where that green is currently shown. And then units circulating around the entire perimeter there with that opening where the loading in that plaza down below is. Since we're moving up the hill and there's parking to the rear of the property, we're also offering a secondary main entrance in the back of this property where that blue arrow is indicating. And a secondary loading zone just to make it very easy to circulate around the building and move in and out. And then as you can see, the vehicular circulation goes all the way around. And there's also a dog park that we're proposing within the natural landscape of the property, slightly off to the left. On the next slide, this just shows that we have units stacking up above and that's the remainder of the building for the rest of the floors. If you go to the next slide, so this is the roof plan, very consistent with what we had before. All mechanical systems are housed up here. And there's roof access from the stairwells within. And on the next slide, we show how the parapets and the exterior walls of the building are screening those mechanical systems. So that from the lowest level, from the pedestrian realm, that's completely hidden from view. And from different vantage points, the angle is helping to screen that. On the next slide, since we are moving up the hill, we wanted to create this diagram to illustrate that stepping. The yellow down at the bottom is the amenity space that we mentioned. The gray off to the side is at that same level and it's building support where the main trash room is, the main electrical room, et cetera, are located on that lowest level. The green central courtyard is at grade, but a level up due to the topography. And then the blue are the residential floors that stack up above. We go to the next slide. So this was the previously approved concept. We had a more natural color palette and texture palette that we wanted to use due to the. Natural elements within the site. And if you go to the next slide, this is the new version where we are using the same materials, the same textures. The only thing that's different here is we are using a different construction type. So it's actually more fire resistant. We're increasing the fire resistance of the assembly. The materials are very durable and will last and won't lose their integrity. And the rest of the elements are consistent though. So we still have balconies. We still have residential windows stacked and through. And we still have the same colors. If we go to the next slide, this is a view that peeks into that central courtyard area from the side of the property that was on the right of the plan. We have the amenity level that's down below with residential all above of it. And then we have that central courtyard plaza area that would be landscaped for loading and for amenity services. The next view here is at the topmost of the hill. It's the back facade and we're bringing back that green color that we had in the previous iteration. We're using lap siding. We're creating a really vegetated nice sidewalk and then that's the second entry that we mentioned where that vestibule is on the bottom left. And if you have any questions related to architecture, please feel free to let me know. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Do you have anything else? For a second. Okay. Turn around and step.
Thank you. So as they mentioned, this plan was previously approved. This is a small modification to eliminate the podium parking. It is consistent with the wetland permit that was granted before the approval of the last plan. And they have addressed all of the conditions of your approval from the last plan. The conservation easement has been filed. That the lighting has been, the photometric plan was part of the packet before it was filed in land records. Another thing that. Resulted from this change is that they were now able to put a sidewalk on the west side of the entrance drive connecting into ledges one. On the previous plan, it was kind of convoluted. You had to sort of hop back and forth across the driveway to safely come down to Drostic Drive. I've noticed every time I've been out there, there are folks who use that dirt road and come from the ledges one now to Drostic Drive. So I think that's a. A really good improvement. All the amenities are per the regulations, parking also, the tandem parking that they mentioned. They did, there's only, I think there are fourteen tandem parking stalls. Those are not counted towards the minimum requirement. Those will be used for folks who have, you know, one or two cars. For their people, yeah, exactly, or, or a boat or, or some other recreational vehicle. And it's in the back of the, of the development near the dog park. That's all I have.
This goes to materials, interior circulation for that. The second little dead end lock that has the standing spaces in it. I nearly have. Back right corner is additional entrance, which is what those people were doing. I didn't see a way to walk from that entrance to that farther. It looks like you go out and walk in the street and then back down. So you walk across the dog park.
Right, so you either have two options, come down through the dog park area or the sidewalk.
Look at the great changes.
Right, well, this ends much.
Considering how much. Access you have in there.
We can add. You know, an extra.
And the access part. Right. I mean, this new landscape, the grass.
We're sucking across the. Parking space, but. I don't remember from the previous one. My landscaping. I can never from the shot. From the shots that you gave us, that generated shot. It looked like there was enormous gap in the landscaping at the entrance. Was that just done to show us or is there, is there something that's a little more screening? I didn't even see that. Normal spacing. It looked like this was a huge hole. You know, landscaping between the street. Made nice and wide at the entrance onto dry spec, looking back at the building. So actually, that looks good.
Yeah.
Illustration didn't show some tree. For the screening, mechanical screening, you know, it's up in the air and the angles. I thought we had kind of agreed. While I. Those angles aren't great, but consider someplace else. Coming adjacent to them, which in this case would be more buildings, but. I'm giving elsewhere. I mean, you can take a couple places, fifty feet away, a hundred feet away, you can't bust to see it. But then the rest of the world sees it. We ended up, just like, you know, we had some geographic problems with that, the exacting between the true angles and then there's hills around it and whatnot. And so the angles just stopped matter.
We could pull up a satellite image and show you where the phase one buildings. I don't think they're oriented where they would look out and see the actual top of the building. Just by virtue of how the buildings are positioned up there. To your point, coming down the drive, there is an elevation change. We haven't done a study on that, but again. Yeah, so. Oh, from Drostic, that's not a problem at all. No, in the neighboring two properties, there's, there's good, good amount of woods. And setback.
Down the drive.
Yeah. But I don't think the, the great change is not, you know, significant that it would. Solstice will not give the seat at all, yeah. The two neighboring properties are shielded by woods and they're also at our, I think, our grade as well, right? So the shot that Talia had shown. Yeah.
Plus, we had a problem. Well, I do not have any questions. So.
We have our equity raised. We're out in market right now for debt. We have a lender broker who's helping us create a market for us. We had a call this afternoon. If we're able to get our lenders on board, hopefully the earliest we could break down is probably, break grounds probably mid-November. The likelihood of that, we'll see. I mean, debt markets right now are extremely difficult. To take a little bit longer for us to find the lender.
And what's the amount of months between, say it was November, doesn't matter when you start.
Yeah, by the time, we're looking at a thirty-two to thirty-six month. Start construction to pull off. You know, our, our goal is, of course, as quickly as possible to get occupancy. In fact, we, we have the building set up so that we could actually perhaps get a temporary CO. In half of the building, start leasing that up as we do the thick and finish in the second. Like again, you know, the lease up velocity should be extremely fast based upon our experience in market and demand currently. Exactly. Yeah, great. So we will start pre-leasing at our phase one prior to the completion of the project. So our hope is we can have. Twenty-five to thirty percent of the free lease before we receive our CO and then start moving the folks in there, sure that they're out.
How, how long, how many months before that would happen?
Full, full lease up?
No, or just pre-leasing.
We'll start pre-leasing probably three months prior to our anticipated CEO.
The twenty-nine.
Well, we'll advertise, but we're probably not going to take any, you know, deposits or anything until we have a date specific. Should last even if it was saying, maybe even in May, then. So we'll. So we'll remember that.
Does anyone need a copy? That's correct.
We have any questions or concerns? And I make a motion. For for the site plan. S I T twenty-two oh nine, the ledges. Two apartments at two seventy-five. Grass six five or following modifications.
It should be twenty-three oh eight. That's that was the old one.
That's it.
Twenty-two oh nine.
Twenty-two oh nine was the original, right? So it should be twenty-three oh eight is the new number. Yes. Yeah, yep, yep.
Well, when I read it, I was going to pick that up. For the site plan, twenty-three dash two eight, four edges. Apartments at two seventy-five, grass five, and a following modification. One, the design engineer shall certify the stormwater management system. Is going to stop for the approved plan prior to the issuance of its particular site plan compliance. All technical items raised by staff shall be addressed. Findings, planning, zoning commission times at the wall, thanks, and landscape lines. On the west side of the site. On the entrance drive, I meant the attempt, section eight point one dash six, the zoning regulations. Second, second, moved and second. Anyone have any questions or concerns with the motion? And we'll hold on. I'll just, just assume that the my comment about the.
Yes.
The law will be a technical one.
Yes, it will.
So that will be a technical. And then we'll hold on the. Site plan. Site. What if we dash a four things? The ledges of two apartments, all those and these. Any opposed, any objections, questions, curt then.
Just want to say thank you very much for your continued investment in Town of Grotten. We appreciate it. There's a great need, so everything get down.
Okay, so next on the agenda is uh. There's uh S I T. Twenty-three oh nine G M S lighting, that's five point one point zero. Yeah, what? Just repeat. Let's see, uh.
The variance for the sale.
Yes, we'll combine these two. All right, we'll talk about this and that's what they'll change the agenda. There's some option. So applicant wants to proceed with his presentation. About more school lighting.
Perfect, thank you. Uh, for the record, my name is Chad Frost. I'm a landscape architect at Kent Frost, uh, based out of Mystic, Rick Norris. As part of the school system is here with me tonight, and then Mike Mahoney is online as well. Um, if you want to promote him, so you got to talk at the same time. Uh, Mike is representative with Musco Lighting, uh, and so he can answer technical questions that I probably can't answer. So um this probably shouldn't be a shock. You're here a month or two ago as part of the variance application that we were going through in that time. Um, if you can recall, this is for athletic lighting at the middle school for the the aesthetic field. Uh, at that point, we were also talking about the practice field in between the grass field and then softball field. Right now, we're only looking to install lights at the turf field and a softball field. Um, we were successful at the Z B A a couple months ago getting that variance. Uh, and I know when we were here, there was discussion about talking about starting to change uh your language in the zoning document. So that athletic field lighting can be something that's doesn't have to be the variance process. And I'll just say we're working on that side of it, too. There will be two other projects through the town, through Park and Rec that are looking to do some uh athletic lighting as well. And so we're working through those two processes to change it so that this is an user process for in the future. Um, I'm just going to flip through this real quick. For reference. I think all the where we are, but this is uh the most cool property you have in Grotton, probably where you're fourth row down the side. Uh, and then you have Brasso and. Side that you put into it. Uh, this is now. From one point really come down, my fault was here, fourth row, here. Um. Softball field is supposed to be intertechnically well, stadium and practice field. As I mentioned, we're all going to put lights up. The athletic field lights, four lights here on the synthetic turf field. There will be pedestrian lights uh along the edge of the practice field. And then the four lights at the south. These pedestrian lights are so that it is a nineteen, have the softball and the multi-use field is not on that people can walk that important nineteen on the tier uh path to go to the park. Either place at pitch or at the middle school. Uh, and I'll note that we have pedestrian lighting uh kind of mid hole on some of these light poles as well. So that just that can be on and it's feeling the soft wasn't going to be with the pattern. This is just the electric plan and I won't spend too much time on it, but we service everything. If you look through all the comments, the fire marshal did have a couple of kind of, I'll say, nitty gritty comments about making sure that we have a line where we align the connect outlets, like that. That's all been uh addressed. Because our, what I should also mention, part of this is scoreboards. There is a scoreboard you can feel being added. Uh, the lights are is an existing shed at this field. I don't have outlets for it to get actually fun things in and do things out there. For these, I mean, you should be added by softball, but also sort of this kind of press box, it will also have power. And then you can have backstop nets on the multi-use field to be able to stop soccer balls and front poles from going upside the field. Uh, as well as kind of ancillary things that you can be done, I mean, put on a plan. You can fully document everything. Uh, as far as the photometrics go, the photometrics haven't really changed much from what's on the field from what we were here. As part of the variance process, there's a required amount of light that we need to get from the foot candle perspectives on each of the planes, so that's safe to play. We need all those requirements device for level of play. That's these two photometric plans. There's also a photometric plan here that summarizes the athlete and just how right that is. I'll let Mike try to explain in a few minutes, but this is the glare uh plan, so that if you were out on the road, how much light might you see? All the lights are in down. Um, in this. So you won't see light sources, but you will still sometimes see the light and move. That makes better sense. And so I'll let him explain that. But the reality, my short summary is that the numbers are really quite good, um, but I'll let him. Explain that a little bit further. Uh, as far as light around the edge, for the most part, we're at zero all the way around. There's a small part along here where there were the church. Where we're just a a point or two above zero and four point two. But what I would note is that's also where we have an existing that would bring buffer that's about thirty-five. So that buffer will fully block any light uh for it to stand. Um, the one thing I should note on softball. There were a couple of holes that when we were going through those variants, there's actually a couple of holes that have uplights uh mid pole up. So we used the most uplight plan, so we really called all the light down and talked about that through the Z B A process. But there are full cutoff features with a ton of focus coming down. What I failed to realize when we were here for the Z B A was that because of that, it's so down so well that from a softball perspective, when you get a fly ball, if all the light is up here and down, the bottom of the ball you're trying to catch. You can't see it against the sky. And so there were a couple of lights actually potentially in the top, so they've been like the bottom. We've removed those lights from this application at this point because we realize it's not part of the variance and it's not allowed by the zoning at this point. So as we go forward in the other projects, we work on changing that regulation and that language. We will then kind of come back to it later, but right now we scratched them from the project so that you understand this. Um, since they are upward these months. Probably will be at some point. Looking at each pole specifically, again, heights haven't changed from when we were here from the Z B A process. You've noted the the couple of lights that are shown here that will be part of this project from the situation standpoint. But otherwise, um, light sources and all that sort of things remain the same. All the details of the fixture, details of the ball, so you can that under N. Um, and then some of our James. Mike, if you can hear me. I'm going to jump back to that glare. Illustration that you could explain. Um, what this plan was and the level of lighting that for the commission would be able to understand that.
Sure. And for the record, Mike Mahoney, Musco Lighting. Uh, employed directly by Musco Lighting and have been for the past twenty-four years. What we do, it it, we kind of go the extra mile, if you will, and no zoning board or commission ever asked for this type of calculation, but we feel it's important and as um stewards of the protecting the night sky and eliminating glare. We offer this up and feel it's always a a good conversation to have. What these measurements are, and there's depicted every ten feet throughout the intersection. And each one of those is a a reading of candela. And candela can be described best as glare. So if you're, for instance, if your neighbor has a really annoying coach light, maybe a brand new LED bulb in it. And that's unshielded. And you're sitting on your front porch and that thing is just kind of blaring blaring at you. Um, you're experiencing glare. You could not read a newspaper by the amount of light that that is producing. It's not producing probably any light at your porch. But you're feeling, you're experiencing that light. So that's candela. And to give you a kind of a baseline. Low beam headlights are around fifteen thousand candela, high beam headlights closer to thirty to forty thousand candela. And the average across this entire intersection is under six hundred candela. The 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 highest point is just over one thousand candela, so ten percent of the glare, less than ten percent of the glare you would experience from low beam headlights. And that's uh really the best, in a nutshell, best way to explain that.
And that's if you're, my, for my, that's if you're staring up at the light source specifically, right?
That's correct. Yeah, you'd have to be stationary. Uh, you'd have to stop and, you know, search around for the brightest point and stare at that light.
So that, so basically, when you do the photometric, you have to use the word. The photometrics go to zero in eleven. Yeah, you know, but you all listed in the level. But they look at because this is a. And Mike, refresh my memory. I know you said there's a threshold of where you guys normally would say it could be a problem and you want to uh do something to make.
I'm sorry, Chad, I couldn't hear that.
Um, I'll step forward. Um, could you refresh my memory on the threshold from the the number where you guys say glare becomes an issue, we want to do something to mitigate it?
Oh, well, I mean, the at around twelve to fifteen thousand candela, that's low beam headlights. So our our eyes are, we can adjust to that, we can tolerate that. You get up into the thirty thousand, that's high beam headlights. That's where that glare becomes um disabling. And you have to flash your high headlights back at somebody. Uh, so, you know, anything, anything north of twenty thousand, i- it starts to get probably a a bit annoying.
So so basically, the the my short name and summary is they do this, it wasn't required, it's part of the regulations, it's a beautiful type because it is the intersection. Uh, and it's ten percent or, you know, it represents ten percent of the amount of area before they would even consider it to be something that should be. Right, so it's it's in there. It's a bunch of numbers that we don't normally see very often. I'm sure you don't see very often, so we want to try to expose it. But it's part of their process to look and make sure that it wouldn't be a problem down the road, even if it's something new. Are there any questions I have?
You want to ask questions about that now?
No.
All right, we'll have you back. We all.
See, so the so the sort of it is, um, we did receive the comments from staff. We addressed, I think, most of them, both on the plans that we've resubmitted and within our letter. The only thing I will um kind of call out of it uh was the fire marshal comments, which was quite a few of them, as I mentioned. The one um that they did kind of specifically ask was for an emergency access point on where the construction entrance was. And and that's one thing that we can't provide, and I think it's probably not very good thing to provide. We want there's current emergency access to the site from a couple of different areas. Far and within the site. That was what was part of hearing the regional approval, which we think should remain. Uh, we know D O T does not want that any sort of access off that the state will in here. We totally agree with that from the school perspective. And if anything, discourages anybody from trying to park it, and using that as a second reason, so another emergency entrance there will just probably. That's all right. Specific comments. Um, with that, like I said, really with the exception of taking out the the lights on this field, all everything else is remained the same point as the new process.
Yep, um, thank you. Uh, so a couple, just a couple of the things to add. So if you were looking closely at the site plan here, there are regulated wetlands located in the northeast section of the property. However, all of the proposed activity will take place outside the hundred-foot up and review area, so there's not required for a wetland permit. Um, for the only ground disturbance that's involved with this project is for the light pole footing excavations and and electrical trenches. Um, the basically the minor amount of ground disturbance will be accommodated with silt fencing as well as um it's shown on the on the site plan, too. There's a bunch of ca- catch basins there, and there'll be protection around each of the catch basins, and that will provide um adequate protection during construction. Um, in terms of the lighting, which is a big piece, again, there was a variance granted by the zoning board of appeals. Um, and for the height requirement in an R S district from the basically the twenty feet to seventy feet. Um, uh, lighting will ext- help to extend the playing fields hours as well as the walking path safely. Um, the provided photometric plan and and obviously there's discussion with Musco and the applicant demonstrate that the outdoor lighting does not spill over beyond the site property lines. And as the applicant had mentioned, no upward lighting is. And as the applicant had mentioned, no upward lighting is proposed as part of this project. There's a few other things in the staff summary sheet, which I'm sure you all have all seen, um, but I'm happy to address any other questions.
I know how incredibly well. Does the. Are these LEDs? Gone beyond incredible control they give with high pressure sodium, what not before. Or, no hell, it's, so what did surprise me with this glare, which I do understand. Is that on the approach. Heading directly towards the school. From. From the intersection, from coming from school out to the intersection. So you're heading uphill a bit. And I'm surprised to see those numbers that high, now you, I mean, the, the, the thought was, oh, it's not alarming, it's not ten thousand. But I think to be annoying and to obfuscate what you're looking at, you can get well below it. When you have little flashlights aimed at you and you'll be in the, in the hundreds. And you'll still just confuses details. So most of this is in the twenties and thirties, and yeah, it looks, it's candle. And then we're into two thousand, three thousand, up to five thousand as you approach the intersection, just beyond.
There, there's one spot there, and our thought is that it's because of the way that a couple of lights have to be aiming. To get to the back outfield corners and isn't.
Okay.
Right, um, and what I would also then point out is that where you do get most of that, that light is kind of right there on that. Island. Right, that's where you're looking, or no, you're looking at here, there's, they're coming up there.
Yeah, yeah, right, that's.
That, again, this is. Having to look directly at a light source to get that number, right? So if you're driving up the hill, you'd have to be looking perfectly.
It's off to the side.
Right, to get that. It's not really taking into account how you're driving and looking, and it's not in your face, it's not like the light is. At the top of the hill pointing down. It would be, you'd have to be standing in the road and, and turning and looking off seventy.
Well, this, I could just turn in your head because the angle won't be that great that. In the thousands here. And the clouds over there, so, but there's no reason to look down the road at that point. You'll be looking straight. You're absolutely right.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm very surprising that it's that high, you're saying there's no spill over and. Yes, there is.
Well, it's one of those.
It's one of those things that doesn't show up when you do.
It's how you, it's how you measure.
But this, this one would be always more important, as it turns out.
But it's one of those that's very difficult to, to measure, very difficult to measure in the. On site.
If you show your argument, this is not, it's not showing directionality, you mentioned, of where it's coming from, this would be off.
And, and again, it's one of the, how your movement works and the coming up or going down.
And we don't have a residence right across the street there. This is upstate. So they're clearly going eleven thousand.
Uh, they should be, if you look at how fast the numbers drop off. Um, you know, we're back to even on, you know, I'll say sixty feet away of the road. We're down to twenty. And again, it's, it's all about what, you know, right, photometrics, which is what we're used to always pegging, goes to zero. And that's the.
So the only place it could possibly get trouble is, is at the merge. Cars coming south on it and take a left. Right at the merge when they're. But then we're back down to ten. How high above the road is, like, the future at that point?
Um, in rough numbers, I would say that's a. Definitely, definitely, probably higher. Because the gray there is not, not. You know, and certainly, so it's, safely is fifty.
And how far away from public scale? I'm trying to figure out what it would, from when you stopped to make a left turn into the school.
Yeah.
And it looks great at that point, but right when you start to merge, how far would the angle upward that you look at the light? That's where, that's where the glare comes in, that's three hundred feet up, you're not getting better, you can't see it because you're nine grounds, right? But. Fifty feet is the rise. What the runs there, what's that distance?
If you're back on that island, you're two hundred and forty feet away. Before, you know, if you're a car length, so I'd say, let's say two hundred feet, if you stopped at the light. Waiting to turn around.
It's fine, in fact, at the light. Looking over my shoulder to see who's.
But.
I would add that if there's any streetlights out there, you're gonna get way more glare from those, any streetlight.
Except that the angle up to the streetlights would be great. They did a great job with streetlights, yeah, those are wonderful color, they're actually up in the air, yeah, good job. Uh, but this is kind of an additional thing. I'm kind of surprised that you couldn't, knowing how customized the screening is. For. Bathroom. That it couldn't just be almost a more screen. Is that actually impossible in this situation? To add on, if these are all. None of these are, are stock, considering.
They're all mopped, and Mike, I'll let me answer that question in a second, my quick answer is gonna be, there's a requirement to get that twenty one, you know, over twenty foot handle on the outfield.
It shouldn't matter. It shouldn't matter because he's gonna cut it off, that bathroom is just like cut off.
I agree, it drops quickly, but that's my point being that you gotta throw enough light to get the safety service covered over the field. And, and really we are in a pretty tight spot, if you look at them. You know, we're sixteen feet away from the road, you're going from twenty to zero.
The thing is reflective bathroom.
Yeah.
I learned this from Musco.
Mike, do you have any answer on if you could do anything to lessen that glare on that intersection?
I mean, I, I wouldn't, I guess I would disagree with saying that there's glare out there, if there's only. Yeah. I mean, a, a desk lamp is five to eight hundred candela.
That's like in your face is really annoying. And you're, you're right.
Yeah, but keep in mind also, these, we're showing measurements every ten feet. So from the front of your car to the back of your car, it's gonna change, you're, you're through this in. Very short period of time. And you'd have to be, first of all, your eyes would not be on the road. Which is another issue, but um, you know, between the streetlights, the stoplights. The oncoming headlights, can we reduce it? Sure, but. There's a trade off.
Is there? I mean, because I look at you say there's streetlights and there's headlights and all those other things, and all these things add up. And they're all bad, and so to say, well, we're gonna add a few more, or add a pretty good one. It's not a good thing if we can at least bit avoid it just right at that merge point, that's a, it's a nasty merge, as it turns out. We have high school students driving on that merge. With their grandparents trying to merge with them, so think about this.
Uh, and I'm. For the, the street trees, the, the. Yeah, and they're not taking into account, you know, so my, where I was going was, I don't know if we can get the right kind of. You know, if you're talking about almost a millimeter of the back, trying to get. That little bit of light to not hit out here, and it'd be easier to just put something in the middle of the screen than I think we could optically. A tree or two that would be at that direction.
That would, that would.
There's one that's already there or something like that, so that could be a condition that we look to see.
That would be fun, that would do it.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, sure, there's, yeah. Yeah, exactly, yeah, they're definitely, there's definitely something there, okay.
Yeah.
How, how high would that be? Like the algorithm.
You got to be.
You know, for that, for that angle.
So we can, I was, and we did that one. Look at where those two zones after.
Okay, that's, that's it, so. Yeah, so it seems to be ones. Well, I, I'm looking at, this is pre-construction that Google Maps has. The candy tree would be, be quick of the same. Alright, which would change these numbers.
And that's one of our things, are those, you know, computers don't get anything.
Alright, then, look good, thank you. Uh, who controls all the lights, who's turning them on and off? Especially the ones that are the walk lights that are only gonna be turned on when.
Their phones control all the lights. Um, so it all, it's, Musco has an amazing control, so it'll be. Principals, athletic directors and things like that, they set things on pre-programmed and then they will be able to use from a low app. They'll turn certain fields on or off, but the access fields. Um, so. Talking with, with Mark Ramallo, there's, once he sets schedule for practices and games, or probably just added on schedule time for lights, and it's going on. And on the road, but then they have to go.
Are, are these up focused lights that you were talking, that we're not putting in? Is that gonna be something that we're gonna see again?
We'll have to figure out how we, yeah, what we, yes, that's what I answered.
That's it. So.
Mike, you want to think that way?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that.
Sure, who sets the um standards for photometric plans for high school play?
Kind of like the class one, class two, class three athletic lighting.
The. IESNA, so the Illuminating Engineering Society of North America has guidelines. The various high school state associations have printed guidelines, Connecticut does not. There are. The league softball. Has printed guidelines, safety guidelines, um. So there's various entities, but I would say the, the IES is the, probably the overriding authority.
So if we don't have those uplights, are, are we not in compliance with something or we just, it's not good?
Well, wouldn't. If you have, if somebody hits a high pop fly, it's gonna disappear. So playability would be compromised, safety compromised.
We'll, we'll definitely be back in front of you.
Sure.
So they're necessarily part of the softball.
Yeah.
As the process we're going through, we gotta.
That's all I have.
Yeah. Also, the Dark Sky International has uh community friendly sports guidelines. And the, the ball tracker fixtures are part of their approved program.
Be nice to be able to turn them on and off whether it's been for their pitches, playing or someone else. I'm just saying. So, I mean.
Gonna have battery powered balls.
Very interesting, thank you.
Does anyone in the traffic authority look at what, what the impact would be that this field is slowed up? There's all this thing about a bright area. Which will lay a, the heart of people's attention. The items of seasons.
We have, they have not gone to the traffic authority at this point. We can, did, did it go to um the police chief?
Yes.
To give it, the, the traffic authority is the town manager and the police chief.
I can make sure.
Yeah, for sure, yeah.
Well, I could read them.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely, we can do that.
Rides light source. Or something against people's attention. Cause we want a reaction. Well, this is, this is the first meeting, the old town next.
No, a lot less.
I'm thinking of the subway's field, which is, we're done with. Lovely show.
It's a firmly known.
Yeah. That's true. More landscaping. Maybe more landscaping, well, that's why I always say. And plus when you have something to come out of, like, uh, you know, I would say, you're coming. You know, moving that left, you're coming from a dark area. You know, it's, you might adjust as quickly if you come into a bright space. I don't, it, I think there's gonna be trees there, probably it's gonna. It's not bad guy, the streetlights, right? Yeah, what I said, I don't think he's talking about that kind of light, but that, that is a big bright thing.
It's, yeah.
Kind of hard to see.
I mean, this is something that, I'm sure you realize, but like, you can see fish from miles away.
And, and you can look at the lighting.
Yeah.
Not holding the lights, the, the second, third. Uh, uh, night, almost back then with grass. You still get some of that, you know, there's a reflection off the field. Uh, uh, lights were there, the game.
I wasn't looking at the, the light technology, just.
Yeah.
Because it's gotta be lit.
So I would say, if, oh, I noticed that, I put a traffic on the second. Right, or more things that are kind of happening while you're driving. Um, that's why we need students to develop and discuss. Driving path upon planes, there's people out playing soccer, people do kind of do advanced, but they don't take the gas pedal. There, there is some sort of a.
But they're not, they're, they're looking at their phone, but no. Does anyone have any other questions? We have a motion.
Anyone need a coffee?
No. Do you have a copy? I see where. Capital goods. We'll make a motion for a three five, site plan twenty three day, hold on, for real stroke. Off the farm, that magnetic field with the history of lighting and third part. Right, low point, low, you're calling modification, one, properly lighting for the softball field light poles. So not real spell is part of this budget. Two, prior to the start of construction, probably. Or do you have a, a, a rule, should be provided to the office. And development services. Three, any modifications to this plan, vote. By another federal state or local agency. Shall require additional reviews. By our staff or commission book. The general support here, four technical islands. As raised by staff shall be impressed. Some need to be tackled. And we discussed. And we just got to learn. Very known on the loan. Foundation, that can be. On that, try to clear that, I was in. Right. Any opposed, reinstation? Questions?
Yes.
Thanks. Most your interest.
Well, just say, say something. The applicants. So, uh, move down the agenda to the C B A. This is a C B A. With the U S S.
Excellent. So I'm back. Um, as hopefully you've all heard or seen, uh, USS Gratten. Uh, was a submarine that was designed, built and operated in Gratten. Um, for a town that's five mile wide and small, Gratten that had. Uh, a naval ship named after our tenants, putting vessels. Um, as you know, living here for more than twenty years, I didn't know it was the USS Gratten until we were involved in this. Um, and and briefly is the artifacts are sort of the um, the sail and the rudder. The ship was commissioned or decommissioned. Nineteen ninety seven. Um, and it was in Washington State, it was being trapped up. A former town manager and some other people within town kind of said, you should. Use something with this, luckily we made it chopped it up into pieces, but saved the rudder and the sail and Washington it sat there for. Quite a long time. Um, and there's been this long process to bring it back and really make a monumental memorial for. A location that has been chosen, as I think you're probably aware, is the road frontage, it was an old D O two right of way. This is the library I was here, the drive fifty five somewhere over here. Newtown Road, there's a very large right wing. Um, the committee that was thoughtful for developing all of this, raised the money and went and purchased this strip of land. Obviously, the state turns one ninety thousand dollars. To buy that little strip of land, you know, put that out there. Um, and and that sort of committee raised the money, this town actually had to do the purchase, it's a bigger money in the town. Town did an eight twenty four, tell this project, we got and that addition process. Um, and so now we're getting close to finally getting ready for. Uh, we're going to the Z B A for a setback. Uh, and basically because this is such a narrow piece of property. By the time you do the the setback. On both sides, you're left with a tiny little split of land in the middle, but obviously you can't go much in. Ironically, the parts of the memorial, so I can go back up. This is the same. We have a plaza around it that has uh a memorial space built into it, so there's interpretive signage and wall space. On the inside and decorative on outside, that's meant to both protect this areas, that if you're having a service or um ceremony in here, you don't hear all the road traffic. Out on the road. We have the full size of the submarine built out of earth and dirt bone. Uh, planted mostly with ground covers and some trees in the middle. And then the rudder placed at the corner. The theory behind it is that we we celebrate in this space, uh, design and construction. We celebrate through this walkway, the under, we call it the underland plaza. So it's intentionally obviously narrow because it's a secondary measure, it's long. Uh, it'll feel like you're down kind of in the ground because we're burning that soil either side. And putting the metal was hanging down on both sides, there they put their signs on it. And then we have the tree can and people over the top that are kind of giving that roots, so you get a sense of enclosure. As you walk down, then we have the rudder. Again, at this appropriate distance from the sail, we call this the family garden. Uh, it will be, it'll celebrate all the families that are in Gratten and their sailors are out to sea. And then you have the connection back to the center, uh, front door, the library. But this is where we celebrate the importance of the naval, especially the submarine industry, which we brought and brought into the submarine industry. So that's kind of the the bigger picture. We're here because of that setback, uh, where we touch the ground, both the sail and the rudder. Need the setbacks. However, the the sail has their level things that come out overhead. And those extend, things in the set up and rear setbacks, ironically, because of the property this thing. So we're there for a variance and we get that structure and some backs. Uh, that's the plan. Couple of sections and elevations. Um, so obviously this would be, you're looking straight down at it from outside of your. Plaza space, that's the wall I was talking about that probably inside. Gives you some privacy from the outside, shields people that you still see. Uh, the sail coming at you, this is intentionally sloped from low to high that Logan, so it looks like the bowing. That's pushing in front of the submarine and the X surface. Um, but there you can see, this is the property line. This is the property line, that's a setbacks. Uh, and how much the the. Some other elevation will be used. Uh, again, that center spaces walk down the building with that one. Hopefully we'll try to be real right. And then just where this section. The the barriers at this point is. The the front and rear setbacks uh to allow those. Questions?
Yes, so how high is that sail above the raid too much? I couldn't, I couldn't tell that.
The sail is twelve feet off of it.
Yeah.
The bottom of this. And so that is in part because. It's, it was a higher sail than some of the other submarines. But we're also actually saying the whole same about fourteen off of the grid. Because of that earth and bone that we're doing. If you put the wholesale on green, it'd be a very inside of both, we would fully spot from outside of every submariner that looked at it, so that's four of them. Um, and so we're we're intentionally putting it up a little bit on. We did a. Portion of the house should be the dome, uh, of a earth and dome, as well as the rudder itself. Twenty below.
There's no any, there's no traffic at any point that goes underneath.
The uh, pedestrian.
Yeah.
So no, yeah, that's. Okay, hundred percent, we want people to walk underneath it, kind of get a sense of the scale. Uh, be able to touch it, you know, and get closer because most all the walls. In town, there is new this. You got close to somebody.
That's all I have.
On that little walkway that goes from sail.
Yeah.
Does that end up where you have a? It's like, well, it's not.
Yes.
Why do they put trees right there? So you can't, it's like, you can't see the place when they were. See, you got a big tree.
Well, this is an existing tree, those are all, those are existing.
I know that.
Yeah. I did not have any.
No, I know that. They, but they, well, the flagpole's there, but I think they shouldn't have. Shorter trees.
A good question, but it's outside the mission.
No, it is.
We actually have a bigger design at home point that incorporate, you know, took this out. Did more connection to get to the.
Oh, to get there.
Um, like everything, this is our.
Oh, you wouldn't want to do it.
That's so bad time to do that now, but this is, you know. Hundreds of thousands of dollars in world worth, and so that's why for this point, we've made an industry. Right, so we we want people to cross the road there right here. Across law, third year's bandwidth. Um, and then just stay as I go to try and make it make sense with those vehicles. Um, that would be.
Is there gonna be any lighting on this thing?
Yes, actually, right now, as we speak, our lighting designer is uh at the house right now. Lighting uh USS Washington uh down there, we're doing some testing on it to see. Lights, but uh, but plan right now, what we're testing today is uh, need rate lights. Around the sail itself. We're testing it with the possibility of using L E D strips. On top of the fair running things and see how well that would like the upper portion. Uh, of the sail. So the idea being that most of this, uh, and then there'd be L E D strips at the bottom of this wall. The inside, so it just. Yeah, none of it should be directly with more than three, right, but lights here would be. Down in out at the bottom of the wall. Here then the angry fixtures, then just to wash this, and then it'd be behind a seven foot wall. That's facing the light stream, um, so ideally all we see is just the sail itself and the wall. And then a couple of angry pictures to wash.
And would it, like, you said there was gonna be signage on the sidewalk, is there gonna be someplace that they run sign that sort of explains?
Um.
The whole thing.
Right now, so again, from a various perspective, we haven't worried about it yet. There's the possibility that it can be a USS Gratten sign, someone upon that outside of the wall to. Say what it is. Um, there's been a lot of discussion within the community as to what is the problem, right? Are we, because this is meant to be more than just the US of France, it's going to celebrate all the L E D design, build, operate and contain submarines. It's telling the story that they use something in this, but it's using the US problem, so. There's some that want to name it, you know, subscribe, because there's. You wanted to just say, there's others that want to name it, so another because of price and quality of the story. And some people just think, how would I need it? Actually, we pretty obvious since it's this big submarine and you go inside and learn all about it on the inside.
It turns out, it's kind of hard to learn with black and black.
That's exactly why.
They do it on I ninety five.
Especially if you hit a high pop fly with a softball.
Yeah.
Doesn't work.
That doesn't work.
Yeah, so literally, they're supposed to be three, you mean.
Um, and you will see a cycle.
Okay, maybe that'd be more appropriate, cause I'm. Yes, you're just. Yeah, that's fine.
That's it. What do you care? Concerns, yeah. Don't concern. We're waiting. Probably don't want to take. Any other. Thanks for the presentation.
Thank you.
Don't go back to the. Agenda order. We are new business age friendly Gratten.
Yes, I have a short presentation for you.
Oh, it's short.
It's very short.
That thing was too long.
I just want to share this screen. Okay, so. Okay, so this is a presentation on the age-friendly Grattan planning that we've been putting together over the last couple of years. Um, there's the small committee. Um. Age-friendly Bratton Planning Committee that includes. Um, let's get my head, just to show you who's on the committee, Mary Jo Riley, who is the director of Thrive Fifty Five, myself, Kathy Chase. Sierra Patrick from the city and Beverly Washington, who's a former R T M member. Um, and now on the board of Ed. And I'm just gonna ask a few, just a few questions, I'm just gonna go quickly through this. So age-friendly Grattan is a A A A A R P designation, that's the American Association for Retired People. Um, we have been designated an age-friendly town, one of six Connecticut towns that are designated as age-friendly. And the other towns are, I've been writing down. Cheshire, Fairfield, Glassinberry, Greenwich and Newtown. Um, this is a town and city collaboration, and as part of. Our age-friendly rotten designation, we are required to put together an age-friendly plan. So this is really for information sharing and grant opportunities. Um, we are part of this age-friendly portal, there's a number of. Community challenge grants that come out every year. Um, that distribute millions of dollars across the U S, so this is helpful for Grattan to go forward with funding. So we put together a plan, as I said, um, we're required to create a community assessment and action plan within two years of designation, so that's by this October. Um, the focus of the plan is to knit together the entire community's efforts. And I account for ongoing programs and projects, so. Really, we we wanted to make sure there was cross pollination with all our plans and the P O C D, we have climate change planning, we have transportation planning. Um, that that there's. References and strengthening to each of these plans through this. Um, by endorsing the objectives of multiple town and city departments. As part of the plan, you'll see there's a community profile included, and that goes through. Some information on Grattan's housing, open space, transportation, our population and demographics, our health. Um, outlook, work and civic environment, respect and social inclusion and communication. And that is because um, we are, we fit our action items into these eight domains of. Yes, Hal, that is. Uh, so our outreach process to set the goals includes, included and includes the monthly committee meetings, we actually have another one tomorrow, so we are continuing to meet, this is an ongoing plan. Um, we have a project website on greatergratten.com that had, that has polls and maps on it. And also a twenty question detailed survey that was put out. Uh, we did a public workshop. That Hal attended um back in June of twenty twenty two. There was also a drop-in event at Thrive Fifty Five where we posted boards for several weeks to gather feedback. And just are now accepting continual feedback through these presentations. Um, I did present this to council with Mary Jo last week, presenting it to all of you as a referral, and then we're going to the city in September to talk to them. So as part of the plan, um, there's the eight domains of livable community, that these are categories for action items. Um, and these are um set through A R P, but they're really based on a lot of research that they've done on the subject. Um, and the eight domains are housing, outdoor spaces and buildings, transportation, social participation. Community and health services, work and civic environment, respect and social inclusion and communication and information. So if you look at the plan, you'll see there's a page up for each of these that has action items and then goals. So this is a very quick summary of the action items and goals from the plan, and I'm sorry, it's small text. Um, under housing, what the major action items was to provide more opportunities for seniors to remain in their homes. Outdoor spaces and buildings. A major action item was to provide more access to the outdoors and more accessible public buildings, and that was done through things like A D A um audits. Uh, and looking at um. How our our outdoor spaces accommodate people and groups. Um, transportation goals included, uh, increasing transportation options, including walkability, so that was really discussed a lot. Was connectivity of sidewalks. Um, and making sure that. It's a walkable environment with benches and lights and wayfinding, things like that. Um, social participation, we had goals that included creating opportunities for seniors to connect and socialize, so that's both in person and virtual with the programming. The Thrive Fifty Five already does, which is extremely robust. Um, and then also adding some more goals for the future. Um, community and health services, we had the goals of promoting access to affordable health and fitness activities. Providing community support services to allow people to stay in their homes. Um, so. For example, um, a goal is to, in the future, create a brochure about how to. Update your home to accommodate um first floor living, for example, or. Grab bars, things that help you stay in your home. Um, work and civic environment. A goal there was to increase opportunities to engage in civic and community activities, so things like what you all are doing, volunteering for a board. Or for some other fun opportunities in town. Um, and then I get res- respect and social inclusion, facilitating a respectful and welcoming environment for all, including. Bi-Pac and LGBTQ plus folks. Um, and there was the discussion at council about how that's also could expand to. Um, those with disabilities and those of varying incomes. And then finally, communication and engagement, um, providing resources to promote engagement and community events, and a big discussion there was to. See if we could move towards a uh town-wide calendar that would be shared with the city. That would be updated and people could access um to see every event that's happening. So the plan itself sets the goal, this is just an example of housing. Um, we set a goal and then we had a number of action items to each goal. So as you see here, as I mentioned, the providing the opportunity for seniors to remain in their homes. An action would be to create a working relationship with the Grotton Housing Authority, municipal staff with city and town to incentivize development of senior housing. Providing technical assistance on housing applications through benefits coordinator. Um, and then even to modify the zoning regulations. So that's where it comes back to you.
Is this, can I, is this committee going to be making recommendations to us?
Just hold on a second.
Okay.
Um, that's all right. We're in the next step. So next step says that we continue to meet regularly as a committee. Um, and then upon the council endorsement, endorsement of the plan, we're submitting the plan to AARP so that we can complete that step. Of having it part of their library and their technical assistance to other communities. Um, however, that plan is a living document, as I mentioned, so we, um. Will just have it as a guiding policy document and are accepting. Your feedback on a continual basis on that. Um, and then also goals are to submit for grants each year and additional grant funding as indicated. So I guess to answer your question, Mike, um, we've distributed the plan as a referral tonight. And if you have comments that just would take those in. And those will be incorporated into the plan. The recommendations aren't necessarily all directed at you. I mean, it goes across the town.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, so you'll see a few in there that are appropriate for planning. So, um, but yeah.
I mean, I, I guess I, um, I guess my question was, are. Is, is it hopeful that we would initiate these changes or that they would suggest changes that we would then? Try to make zoning wise.
So some of these changes, you will be initiating through the P O C.
Yeah, that's what I would, yeah.
Um, it's not reinventing the wheel in any regard. It's doing, it's just adding up the things we're really doing and then. Seeing how we can make more robust. So. I don't think there's anything that you. Need to lead. I think it's just. Accounted for through that other types of planning. And, and in the P O C D, we can say the age friendly plan also references that's an issue. So it's a. You know, bolstering of that. So that was my quick presentation. Yes, you can ask questions now.
I'll start. How all these kids first? I like more representation. So how did we get to be one of six?
How did you get to be one of six? So like Massachusetts, there's. Hundreds of towns that are age friendly. Um, Connecticut's kind of slower to the game. We're, we're, we're in one of the newer communities jumping on this.
So we applied to art.
Mm-hmm. We applied to art to be designated.
And about how much are their challenge funds or grants or?
So Mary Jo already got a grant, uh, one of the smaller challenge grants. I think it was only a couple thousand dollars to plant trees. Cause they bought some trees for the Emerald Ash Board. You know about that soon. So the, there's bigger grants though that are like ten million dollars, I think. And those are just the AARP grants. But there's other grants that reference. You know, supporting seniors as they aid. These kinds of things are very fundable.
Right. And are those grants only acceptable through, um, the age friendly, um, status that we get? Or can any, any town basically apply for those grants? If we have a better chance of getting those grants, if we have age friendly status?
Correct.
That's fine.
That's all.
Yeah.
Um, just like a little. And I, I'm not trying to sound like, sorry. But I have the, and I am a member of the senior center, but I have, I'm sorry, but. Um, but I, I have the impression that in cross section of the seniors and I mean. I don't think they do say that the senior center is like. Really a feeling to. Start as a comment, this is kind of. Somebody saying, I know that it comes across as a, it's a simple thing and senior lives and I think that our people just. I think the thing, one of the things that's very important to work in this. Was really the transportation part of it, um, biking and different. Rules of bikes and things like that. And, um. It's a difficult town to bike around. Not to go to some, but to go everywhere you want. It's a real challenge. And likewise, it's a difficult town to take a bus. Well, quite a showing of prejudice there. I know a lot of the kids, the good thing I wanted to do was not have to be a bus. And getting a car was a tip. But it was like, here, the bus system community, I don't think it's much different than where I grew up, the Long Beach. But still, you had, there's a few lines, a bus that comes in one in two hours. You never sure it would. You had no place to allocate anything. And it's like, you know, people talk about the process of. Possibility. I don't know if that's a nice. And we use a self-driving, you know, battery operating things that can pick up on the. I mean, there's so much great technology now and you go back. Your boss, I was looking at bosses today, right? Look at the legends and stuff. If that wasn't that empty, I've never seen one, this even. I just.
Doesn't run.
They did a lot of.
Well, I love that you're saying you're very good. Cause it, it's a calm.
Well, there is a, there is a goal to talk to seat about bus shelters, but perhaps extended service or shuttle dialer rides. I know the senior center does have a shut that dialer ride service.
I think the shelter. I know there's one on top of my street. There's one right in front of me. They're around and people, you know, that is an important visual.
Also think that. Technology is going to save them. I mean, you've got using Uber technology. Maybe you don't have to pay for it, maybe you do. But you can get a vehicle. Maybe it's just a jitney. Maybe it's something smaller. I can scoop up a few people here and there. Combine that with being electric. So self-driving, that was, it wouldn't change everything. But I think the technology can save us if we use it. But you can't have a big diesel bus making around town because you can't afford the drivers.
Wow, no, those things.
School buses, you know, they don't say that one person misses.
Kids, all the parents line up in the schools now. You'll see.
No, I think if you like more cost, it's like.
He bikes.
Wow.
Well, you could have training wheels.
Or making.
I'm sure there'll be, um, they'll participate, participate.
Um, yeah, and I think some of this is talking about. Making it easier for people to use outdoor spaces. It's not that on the trails, it's wrong, but it could be no, I'm sure people are like, oh. Oh, this is gonna be.
Right. That's a good point. So it's almost like, it's happened with that. Um, maybe you show where there've been successful grants and what they've provided. Maybe it's trails, maybe it's something else. Maybe there's a good example. If you show examples of the grants that have been. We can see maybe the vision where Rockford used to go.
Yeah, those are all on the website. I'd be happy to bring those back to you.
Well, I just think the overall, I think it'd be important to slide somewhere that people would succeed in some ways.
Yeah, I think one other thing, um, a lot of people here in town, you know, they retired and sold. It'd be nice, I'm almost like burning house. Those people that are certainly interested in all kinds of other things. We tend to advertise and they're doing like. It'd be really nice if somebody could say, oh, interesting, maybe how many kids? I don't think you're anything like that. There's so many people that kind of hesitating.
Yeah, we had that, that actually was a great suggestion.
Asian life, all kind of thing inspired, uh, sign up for the Grotton utilities that I mentioned on it. That is a life saving. Everybody know, the things they can do to your electorate. I don't think that's, um.
That's city. But if you do ever search. Well, that's why I'm at city, yeah, but it's.
Yeah.
Yeah, ever source offers it at fifty dollars, but, but if your income is a certain level, it's very.
As it turns out, when you apply for, um. Stake running for the soldering panels, that's part of the package that you're required to be.
Is this something that your work, it is like Thrive Fifty Five involved in this? Is that like?
Yep.
So she, um, I mean, I, it's. Seems like there's a, that's the point. Person. Mary Jo is.
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, it's important in these kinds of things that there's somebody to check.
Oh, um, yeah, Mary Jo is, is the current point person being the director and senior center.
Yeah, the other thing, I just mentioned. So somebody saw a year ago, one of my first houses. They had a deal that, boy, you were certain needs, the property tactic they law. Yeah.
The people who can afford it.
Real estate value in each area.
It's all where you are. And I think we're all there. It's, it's, it's. We're not a good cross cut, as it turns out. Very terrible cross cut.
But to be a little more, how do we give seniors here? Because I know there's a lot of people, especially. On the coast or something, I think they can't afford the taxes. It's kind of like. With some more things on the community too.
I'll just mention the document itself. Um, I think it was distributed to all of you. Yeah, I'd really appreciate that.
I know this mystic.
I know, isn't that ridiculous?
Tourist, tourist. Other new business, you got new applications.
So, um, you'll have a public hearing on the math amendment at your first September meeting. Um, the rest will just process like the normal.
Initial reports.
Bishop and Thorac, yeah.
That's the.
Yeah.
It was in. A couple of weeks ago. I think they were four. Or, um. Chair wasn't there. And you have. Knowledge. Staff. But the most of this actually. Five transition. It's pretty good. It's. There's a lot of discussion. There are saying that it has very good. Discussion on the purchase. And what will happen after the first session.
Is that what we're going to invite?
Yes.
Right, yeah, number of.
Well, people say. We need him. Well, that wasn't a discussion, but we made him the card office. When you go toward, get off from. About three minutes alive. Take a left there, go down toward the. The road and get your bill.
Yeah, I don't think it's Norwich Town.
If you go past sunny end of the right.
Yeah.
Go past the major, uh.
The entrance to the industrial park.
Okay, oh, I know. I've heard you talk about this and I've never even.
Well, where you go. It's hard to see it. When we were talking about maybe we should have time. Cause if you did, they did try one and then, and at this time. Or the last, the least time. You're supposed to be the last time. The sites, it's supposed to be a zoo reading. This was supposed to be in person. That's all about the office. Official position on this condition. Does anyone know the commission? Even the blame is, but I'll, I'll be brief with it. I just was, uh. At the lesson for pickleball over the Grotton Community Center. This kind of goes towards P O C D, but I don't want us to get the line cited at this in the future. So it's in the gym. And it was only seventy something outside and it was still an oven inside. Inside the gym there. I have actually had previous, uh, balloon dance classes in there. And it was on you, almost unusable because it was so hot. So for the summer, remember during the summer, kids got off because it was too hot. Air-conditioned place. And so it's pretty sad in there during the summer. It's the building is a mess. It's all fit. Which can be a pretty good community center. They're making the best of it. We've done wonders with it. But it needs help. One of the things that came up with the Claude Chester study is they gave you two options of where to put a pool. One was a big, nice, big, beautiful pool on the Claude Chester property. And the other one was, uh, not really, not very nice thing, kind of a tin box in the back of. The old Fitch Middle School, which made a whole lot of people vote for, no, give us a nice, new, beautiful one. On the Claude Chester property. Well, they didn't give other choices like how about a nice, big, beautiful one on the Fitch Middle property. And by the way, make Fitch middle into a will. So one was supposed to save money and the other one was, and the lead Fitch Miller as, as some embarrassing. And, uh, give us a new pool. So I want to make sure we're not sidetracked by that. Instead, the question there went out and it clearly came back. Oh no, I mean, I didn't vote it that way. I could see the bigger picture. Let's put a nice new one on the Claude Chester property. Well, that's just because those are the choices they gave them. And that's the idea of spend the same amount of money, if you like, and let's make the entire thing great. That's the Fitch Miller site. That's the Fitch Middle school site. Which you could do for about the same amount of money, always be a bit better. And we have one set of locker rooms, perhaps, one real lobby, perhaps, one set of staff for the whole thing. So to. Make perfect sense. And that's something quite the questionnaire show because they only gave you two choice. I just want to make sure if it's gets back to us and hear another thing about, oh, the town has spoken, the town hasn't spoken. They answered the question. It was a longer question. I think that I think that the school still has lots of rooms, got an auditorium, it's got plenty of spaces that can be used. It's something kind of split level sort of thing. I don't know what's going on upstairs yet. They're going to need that small.
Yeah.
It's a good place to move thing, but they should have a real development. Absolutely true. And there's no front entrance written, just some.
Which you're pointing that. It seems to be a split region. Sort of a single region where good. We made a single building. Instead, we're now.
Well, that's.
It seems like more cost.
No, it's absolutely no cost. And but it came out of the question that they asked.
So I think. A home run, sure.
Right. So they just got what? And frankly, I I looked at it and said, well, here's where you could put. It wasn't binding one because it was just for Claude Chester fields that we're talking. What are we going to do with Claude Chester? Not how we put up a pool. But the pool came up and so now it kind of got this thing on the record. Which is kind of motivating to guys. And I looked at it and said, well, great, I would put a a brand new spankling pool with its own locker rooms and own staff backing up against penny penny. And I don't see that as a as a great idea in general, while we still have this other facility that we really should be putting some money into. By relocating the pool in a better place. That's where we can get that. Somebody.
My issue is, you heard like this. Here's is in the next thirty six months. That would be weird creating a funnel. Well, great, we aren't necessarily, we have, is there a single that somewhere that shows the network that I've been trying to meet this at least. And therefore we take some of the buildings that I know that are getting mixed. And so we go on our meeting with the actual numbers, the total numbers that we have. For instance. Twelve, we have. It just seemed like. Don't have an algorithm as far as our total apartment stock. Like the new day, how will we act? And the department, we need. As long, I don't, I don't.
No, it's a question I have about what the goal was.
Right, yeah. I mean, as of right now, there is. Right, there's definitely a study that's online, you know, that identifies the need. Um, it will be updated um as part of the plan of conservation and development, but it doesn't necessarily provide. A a roadmap forward that, you know, we need to put them here, 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 and here.
It adds up to.
Right.
We identify it's. It seems like we do have some project coming in. I don't see any movement across Walmart.
That just got. Didn't the one, oh, that. But the uh school was on Sealy School is.
Now that one up by Walmart is, looks like the weeds are growing.
They've gotten a building from it.
Oh, okay.
You're right. I have not seen.
I I mean, I've heard John uh Reiner at different times say. Like what the regional need is for apartments. Several thousand, four or five thousand, I think, something.
It's more, it's more than that.
And and I, in the last year, I don't know what we've probably put about a thousand. Yeah. On.
I don't know. No, I don't think so. Not the last year.
I mean, there was three hundred in Sealy School. Frosting drive and.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 approved.
Yeah.
Well, we almost created a funnel, which there's a total level market. What's our service address for market like brought? What do we have in the works? There was one that was like within thirty six months of the half. The projection of this thing or whatever. It just seems like we're getting closer to him. Then some of the, I guess. Press of the brain that we're not reacting with. And I don't know, it just seems like we are metrics are good. I'd love to be able to see the funnel. As far as that.
Right, I think the hiring number is suspect. There's a retention rate. Needs a lot more than one would expect. So they keep going, oh, we're gonna need to arm ten thousand people.
Yeah, you gotta be careful of that, yeah.
Have to be very careful. Be nice.
You don't want to end up. In building our apartments for high level of employment in the last.
Which is sure private.
No, but I mean, yeah, I I think people that keep pushing. For more, we need more housing. You got to be careful with that. Because.
If we're doing that judgment, we knew exactly what we have in them.
No, it's a, it's just. You know, it's what's available, build. It's not a lot of sale.
I guess the only complaints I hear a lot of. Employed, it's coming to town, it's all expensive.
Well, then you stood.
Build construction.
Pretty interesting.
We don't have.
I was wondering, I was gonna report on, I guess, don't feel I went to that perfect person.
Well, that.
Solving the development puzzle, bringing fidelity back to.
No.
And I could, I could. I could bend a few out, but I won't. But what we'll think of that, I got, and that's why I sent this article from Wall Street going around about. Water, that request to know. Um, like that was very interesting. I think we're the same issue here. It's a lot of times we don't seem to know what people really wants to do. It comes with the doing again. I find that. You know, things like, but. We have. We had to meet in Bennys and. Who knows, somebody. Somewhere else, put another circle on the door choice thing so you could say and find out what the owner wants to do. But we never seem to find out. And it's it's like a great space. It'd be nice to know that. Say, is this gonna be used? Is it gonna be all for investment for fifty years? You know, is there any possibility here? But to hear something older one, or is there anything else we could do? Make a situation. Help us. Get going, because it kind of puts a little flag on thinking we really have. Very. Tons of parking, empty buildings and so on and so forth.
Like for instance, if you change this account. Going to that, they're almost say, where is the talent brought like a restaurant now it's like. Long days on time, we don't have that.
Well, that's why we changed the zone. The regulations were changed for that.
Right.
And the problem is that the people that own the property. It's not like the guy who just bought the crystal ball. They don't want to put any, they don't want it to redevelop. And that requires redevelop.
Well, the new one today is ready. Almost one down on everything, same articles in there. Oh, when a girl from New Zealand read this, I know it's a crystal ball. All these things like you might. The order says, I'm not interested in it.
Well, the problem there is that it's owned by different seniors and owned by.
They gotta re, they gotta redevelop that.
No, but we have that rotten because I know we've had plans for, we've talked about. Our, what with our downtown area, but it doesn't include what soon saying. Input from the people who are actually right.
Well, I think John Ryder has got. Has been talking to. We face that. Yeah, the people that say we don't. The orders. People want rent, they put up a sign, thanks for rent. That's all they don't want to go.
There's things happening. I see it happen. Maybe our new cannabis store will be the. In the distance. Something, who knows? I shouldn't hold a wine, a little cannon, someone's gonna open up. A spark.
Which, by the way, Curly had a line out the door this afternoon. It locked Curly. That's the place it's always.
Oh, Curly.
Is it lying out to the door?
Yeah, so.
Yes. These people are buying Rico. That's great. That's for.
Well, that's actually all the parts.
No, this is the one.
We need to get the wrong station.
Yes.
Talking about that for twenty years. I had two questions uh I heard on the radio today that it was, and I don't even know if it involves us, but legislation was passed regarding lighting. Well, it's something today. Dark sky legislation. I don't know if it affects us or not. It was interesting that it was uh sounded like it was, whatever it was, he signed it today.
Okay.
And then do we have a representative on complete streets committee?
I wasn't.
You were, or you're not anymore?
Well, this has been weird.
Oh, okay.
You kind of did its thing.
It's an application.
To get on it?
I guess so.
I put in an app, it's someone that I was talking to Brian Ken, actually, he suggested that I could get on it. And I put in an application, but I don't know. I don't know if there's a conflict with me, I guess they. Like or.
Yeah, but he's not, yeah, there is, there's an applicant, application on the first website.
I filled that out.
Right.
But I didn't, after I filled it out, I thought, um, my property should go through.
That's fine.
That's okay.
Yeah, I mean, there's a number of staff that was who are on it. Haven't had any projects.
Right, that's.
I was to submit a project and then.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, then it's. Now there's, maybe there's a. That's it.
Anybody have any singles?
Yeah.
I just have one thing. Um, the TVCCA daycare. May be ready for um decision soon. They would like to do it sooner than September, so I'm just asking you all if you have availability. Um, for the second meeting, what would normally be the second meeting this month? That is the twenty second. Yeah, twenty second. And and I'm not sure if this plan is going to be ready. Okay, but I just wanted to know if there's a possibility of a special meeting that might be.
Do it um. Soon. I mean, I don't know. I I think I might be away, but. I'm definitely.
Okay. We'll send out an email.
Yeah, no, that would be good.
Again, I'm not sure these guys are going to be ready. There's three or four different professional groups who are working on the plan and so coordination sometimes is a challenge.
Meaning, what's the needs of isn't it?
They have to be applying the brands for it. And if you have a shovel ready project. Yeah.
It's not very.
No, they're still funding, they have some funding.
For a special meeting, do we have to have, I mean, could we just have a special meeting at any time? Yeah, I wouldn't be agreeable to, I mean, I would. Have a meeting anytime that would come with it. Because that seems like a good project. Keep moving, not. I hate to slow someone down, right?
She does have some funding, but there's another grant that's coming up in the fall. If it's shovel ready. That's all I have. Okay.
Can we go and have a presentation separate these days?
We will, John has been out on medical news this December, so yes, he'll be back.
We got a questionnaire. What was that?
I don't know. It was sent to a number of us. Um, it's looks like it's a statewide effort to see basically who would, who are the decision makers.
Yeah, no, it was just the second time we've gotten one and it went through and he went to like my. Another email or I was responding to another one. I just thought it was a little strange. I did not respond to it because I didn't know.
I questioned it because it's like a questionnaire, which is sort of a. Who I am. What's my phone number?
Yeah. Well, and then also, well, I mean, not to be suspicious of things, but it, but Deb's. She was just, I think her comment was, here's a questionnaire, fill it out. She doesn't usually write that way.
It wasn't ours. It was something we were asked.
That's fine. I just wanted to make sure that it came from. She ended up putting your background.
It was pretty fishy.
Sitting with a cash card, right? Thank you. That's all.
Okay, we have. Imports for applications and ASV. Is everyone having anything else? We get a jury. Seconds.
Oh, great, thank you.
I put a bag of cucumbers over there, but once.